All right, call this meeting in order, please ask for the flag sleeve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any citizens, they're to be heard. Hearing none. Chris?
I'm good today, thank you.
Good. Item four, consideration of possible action on previous minutes of March 30th and 31st, 2020.
No more motions, cut.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five, discussion, possible action concerning update, time, place, restrictions, options of Oklahoma Statute, Senate Bill 661 amending certain sections of the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act and the Oklahoma Attorney General's opinion and FAQ, Statements one and two. I have no idea.
Yeah, I asked to put this on the agenda because there's a lot of, I guess, misinformation or misunderstandings about the Open Meeting Act and how that Senate bill affected what it is we do and we're supposed to do. So I asked Troy to put it on the agenda so we could go over some of the, what I thought were kind of salient issues, important stuff.
Right.
And with that, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I can go through, you know, each. It won't be line by line because there's way too many of them to just, you know, to read out loud. That doesn't make sense, but I do have a couple that I thought were important and then when I get finished, whatever discussion we'd like to have, we can have.
Sounds good.
All right, sir. The one that jumps out under this statement number one, I'd like to start it with item number six. Are meetings still required to be opened in public? And that's a big yes. So the public could still, should still be able to watch a meeting if it's in real time via video conference link or a video conference is not available, listen to the real time call in on the line. And there's also other requirements for video conferencing in public and in line that goes on to describe and near that. If we do go to some sort of a video conferencing, then the public has to be able to view that. And one of the other things that is kind of in the last part of this second piece talks about public participation and it indicates that because we do and have allowed public participation in the past, that we would need to continue that if we have a video conference or teleconference, which means that if we did a video conference, that the public would be, it would have to be interactive with the public as well. So it wouldn't be something that we could just broadcast out one way for the public to observe unless they had the ability to interact as they do in public here with us, right? So that's the only issue that I see, other than the technical requirements, that's the biggest issue I see with us looking at if something, if we need to tighten things up a little bit, going to teleconference or video conference. The technical pieces of that is a bit challenging for us as well, but those can be overcome, but the participation of the public that we've allowed in the past would seem to me to indicate that we would need to try and continue that for video and teleconferencing as well. So I'll move on to the C6. Item eight talks about our votes still required to be publicly cashed and recorded. The answer to that is yes. If the meeting is virtual, then all votes must be made in a voice roll call vote. We do that anyway here, so that's not an issue for us. Nine, can public bodies still hold in-person meetings? Yes. The in-person meeting requirement, after going through and looking at all this, to kind of summarize, that 10-person requirement for businesses and things like that do not apply to open meetings, public open meetings. The distancing requirement, we're asked to do that where possible, right? So in this room, it's been set up for that, but I kind of cherish today and we're at about 15, I think, at the proper distance. If we had more than that, which we hardly ever do, then our only other option, well, our options are video conference, teleconference, or to get a bigger room for a physical meeting, right? And so the, thinking about that, and I'm sure you guys know of other areas we could possibly utilize, but with the courtroom is not being utilized for courts, then we could use that and spread it out a little more for our public meetings as well. Also, the fairgrounds has a very large area that we possibly could utilize for that if the need arises. I'm not saying it has or will, but this is a relatively small room if we draw a crowd for something. So if we have something on the agenda, we think may draw a crowd in the future, that might be something to think about, sir. Other than that, I think that pretty much summarizes the things I wanted to talk about. Yeah, item 15, in the last paragraph of the second piece of this FAQ, says that the public body has a meeting that is solely teleconference or video conference, that the public body has to allow members of the public to speak. And this is the Attorney General's opinion, right? So if the public body normally allows members of the public to speak at an in-person meeting, then the public body must continue to allow members of the public to speak at virtual meetings. With that, that's all I really wanted to discuss. I just kind of wanted to bring this up and, you know, bring to everybody's attention that the Attorney General has weighed in on this with a couple of FAQ statements and that's it, sir.
So any ideas how we could do that? I mean, pull that off, the technology to do that?
You had asked me last week to kind of check on a few things. I know a lot of places are going to Zoom. Zoom had a big security issue this past week. They have a free, that you can use for free. The problem we would have is the free system on Zoom is a 40-minute time limit and quite often our meetings go past 40 minutes. The next one I was recommended to was GoToMeeting. I looked at both of them, I think the features are pretty similar. We're looking at about $19 a month for either one of those really, because the free isn't time long enough to use the free Zoom. But those would be, either way, and they offer video or audio only, that we can sign up and use if it were to be being necessary.
Do they have any limits on the number of users?
They do. They have different plans to allow different numbers of users. The GoToMeeting on the $19 plan, I believe, was 150 users. And Zoom also is a $19 plan that I think was 100 users. And then they have where you can get an unlimited plan if you pay more per month.
Right. And so, Monty, I think that's kind of where we run into a bit of a lagerhead, because having an open meeting, you know, we physically attend the meeting and the public physically attends it. A lot of people don't take advantage of that to come to the meeting. But the moment, I think, that we have a virtual meeting and the law, the way the law's being interpreted and the extensions being interpreted, if we have a virtual meeting, then we have to allow anybody from the public to attend that wishes to do so. So I think that would drive up the want to, first of all, because there's a lot of people at home with not a whole lot to do other than watch us, right? And so I think any plan like that, that has a limit on it, if we exceed it, we got to stop the meeting. I mean, we have, this is what it says, we can't continue. We have to stop and reschedule the meeting for continuance, right?
I would also point out, just for those that are curious, in FAQ number two, item eight, is asked about using Facebook Live and that is not
An option.
An option. Facebook Live does not count as an open meeting option under this circumstance.
I have two items, if I may. Have you looked into bluegene.com?
No.
Okay, try that one. And also, I was a little curious, we already have our meetings on video that are going on the Guthrie.
But that's why I just said, Facebook Live, what Chris does is a community service. Streaming live does not count as a video conference under the AG's opinion.
Okay. Even though there be response and all that?
Even though, and again, it's covered in the FAQ, number two, item number eight. That does not count.
That's too bad. All right, any action we need to do on that? I mean, do y'all want to look into trying to set something up or any more options?
Yeah, I think that it's just something that we just kind of need to roll around and, you know, and have available to us, what we're scheduled to meet on the 15th or whenever that is. Yeah, 15th next, so I think by that time, we should have a good idea whether or not, you know, things are going to be tightened up or loosened up or, you know, what direction we need to go. I don't think that right now is the time for us to say we need a whole lot, take a whole lot of expense on getting a video teleconference system, interactive system set up, because I think it would be a little more expensive than we need.
All right, any more, Mike?
That was the only thing I really had, and I was kind of curious about the, but yes, that straightened me out on that. And then, and personally, I don't have any problem as long as I'm healthy, being able to conduct the meetings here, I don't see a problem. You know, distancing, social distancing, that's the CDC guideline, wear a mask, wear gloves. Those are CDC guidelines. I mean, I'm going home and changing out these clothes since I get home. But what I'm saying is, I believe that what we were doing currently in this meeting is sufficient.
All righty, any more discussion?
No, sir, thank you.
So no action on five. Six, consideration of possible action, approving a joint resolution, approving participation of Canadian County into the Intergovernmental Cooperative Agreement for Circuit Engineering District Number Five. I put this back on the agenda, they keep calling wanting to know if we're going to let them come in to Circuit Engine Number Five. I personally don't have a problem with it myself, so.
And I don't, I think it does bring a few bucks to CED five if they do come in. They tend to be a little long-winded at times for whatever. But yeah, I wouldn't have a problem.
Anyone at Circuit Engine Number Five is pretty long-winded.
Well, I agree. Just add him to the methane in the room, I guess.
Marvin, can you come in?
Yeah, Monty, I do. You represent our county in CED five, so I will defer to whatever decision you make on that, sir.
Thank you.
You are so welcome.
All move that we approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Seven, consideration of possible action to approve notice of grant and agreement and award and amend, number one, award blah blah blah, with NRCS revising the grant to adjust funding and remove one site from the original agreement. Sites continuing, Otter 65 Bridge, County Road 69 and Broadway Bridge, District 11. I just need to get this document signed so I can get that grant rolling and excellent.
I think we approve.
All right, second. So I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries.
And Monty, before we get off of that, NRCS, just a quick question, comment. We've got, not enough, he coming before the board. As soon as we get it from Oklahoma County and get it over to Lowell for his review, that has to do with Deer Creek just north of Waterloo Road. We've got a log jam that's been over there for several years that the people that own the property have been wanting to get cleared and, and so finally, it's my understanding that Oklahoma County passed, their Board of Commissioners passed a proposal to provide up to $50,000 to Logan County if we provide 5,000 and I volunteer the 10% match out of my funds to do that if we need to. And if it gets approved, right? But anyway, I was wondering if we thought maybe that NRCS might provide some assistance to that or is there anything that, in your experience, that may have, may be able to help us there with that outfit?
You know, the only time I've ever gotten funding out of them is if it's related to a storm, which, I mean, you could probably relate that to a storm, but I think you have a certain timeline. You have to ask for the assistance at that particular time. So I'm afraid that we'd probably miss that.
Right. And on private property as well, or?
Yeah, they actually reach out on private property and they'll have them do some projects, you know, that tuck in quite a bit of private properties, have to get an agreement from the landowners.
Okay. The folks from Oklahoma County, the engineer asked me about that and I told them I would ask our board if we knew anything that could be used there.
Yeah, but a rule of thumb, they give you X amount of days to turn in them projects after a storm and...
What about the Water Resources Board, is anything there?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
I'll be talking at the end, I'll ask her if she knows of anything.
Appreciate it, thanks, sir.
Not a problem. So item eight, consideration of possible action, approving a resolution accepting $500 donation from Paul Lloyd to District Two for shale on Arcadia Drive. Let me get it, sir.
Thank you. Motion two, accept that. So.
Just one quick question. I'm just curious, how, because we use shale a lot as well and trying to figure out how to quantify that, I mean...
Oh, that's 909 tons, I think. What's happened is I've had to change the staff, so it didn't come out as a specific. About that would be 909 tons of shale. That will be delivered to a location this gentleman is preferring to be in, ought to be able to really build that up. It's quite a few loads.
Right, so, yeah...
It'll be over in a period of time.
I get you, so 909 tons?
I believe that's what it...
Okay, so 900 tons, does that count, are you looking at averaging your cost of mining? Because we mine our own, right? So the cost of mining and hauling and the fuel required, is that all kind of figured into that, or?
No.
Okay, so I'm trying to figure it out, so...
We pay, what, 55 cents a ton, I think, for it. You do the math, that's 909 tons.
Okay.
That's 55 cents in the ground. That's shale in the ground.
That explains it, thanks, sir. I'll second the motion.
Okay. All right, I got a quick, Arcadia Drive, I guess that's Canadian, maintain?
We helped them to maintain their road.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Consideration of possible action, approving a resolution accepting $250 donation from Robert Fields to District One for culvert on Pennsylvania Avenue.
Yes, sir, this is a new entrance into Mr. Fields' field. And we went out and looked at it and it does need a culvert about 36 feet long and the price of that culvert is about $508 or something like that. I told Mr. Fields I'd split the cost with him and so this is his part of that and I move we accept his check.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. I guess we have no action on 10?
Yeah, it'll be tabled and brought back.
All righty.
And we have no items for 11 and 12.
Item 13 and B, consideration of possible action on consent and agenda items.
Transfers. Transfers from previous fiscal years.
This way, I made the chairman shouldn't have to sign.
I'll let you get started.
Wave a magic wand over them and just make it, make it so. This takes two. Well, I see that, yeah.
Cash funds. This is one of the missed classes.
Hey, Troy, on this, would you please email that back to the end?
I will.
Thank you.
On the Governor Zoom, he has, I don't know what their plan is, but I know he hasn't come close to the 100 threshold as far as logging in. Most stuff seems like 60 or 70, but there's a big offset.
The problem is, his news conference, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
See, that's not a public meeting.
It's conference.
And, and, just FYI, neither the governor nor the state legislatures required to follow the Open Meeting Act, ta-da.
Neither legislature.
Yeah.
Governor too.
Governor too.
That's heavy.
It is.
I'm guessing that bill didn't make it through this year?
It hasn't ever made it through.
I know it was filed by a Democrat, but I...
It's kind of like position, feel myself, it doesn't really work.
I will tell them to you. These are ready for your prison, right from the rest of them.
Thank you, sir.
I didn't realize he was done, I was waiting for this pile, for him to finish so I could move the whole pile of blankets.
Why he doesn't mind? But that, you guys still have the dumpsters out there?
Yeah, I think we're fixing to get rid of them though. Man, we just can't keep up. People haul out there, everything they shouldn't haul out there, but at this point in time, yes, we do. So we'll have them for another week or two. But you know, everybody's off work, ain't got nothing to do. They're killing us out there. Well, to an extent, we have ours under control. Very limited is what we take. But of course, when our trash cop comes in and takes whatever he brings in, but when it comes to the public, we very restrictive as to what they can, what they can regain and whatnot. We encourage them to call ahead, they always have to check in. So to some extent, we'll be giving the services. Really been a massive boon to our old people and a lot of people who just absolutely don't have any other way of getting rid of stuff. But it does beg the question that we do need something like that here in the county. But I don't think it's the county that needs to get into it, so. I wish somebody good and proper guru would come and do us all a favor, take all the trash. I will. My understanding is that Guthrie even takes their roll-offs down in Wisconsin now. Yep. So. Troy, I'll sign them after me.
Okay.
May be a big thing.
That's what you had said, so I stopped.
Well, he can just handle them, too, while I was... If they're approved, I'll say.
I think it's pretty surefire that cash funds get approved or y'all don't have many. I think it's pretty surefire that cash funds get approved, or y'all don't have money.
No, a stick, carrot and stick, carrot and...
There you go.
I, I think it's a rubber stamp. But, you know...
Well, technically...
I know.
Technically, they're not approved till tomorrow. Because they still have to go to the Exasys Board, and they have to let you have the money officially.
Absolutely, yeah, uh-huh, wonderful staff.
One's an appropriation request, the other one is the actual appropriation of them. Called the checks and balances system.
We don't have a trash system, we're gonna get like seven hundred more dogs.
Seven, eight more dogs?
Deputy dog.
Oh, yeah. That'd be nice. I know you wouldn't put a purchase requisition from someone that wasn't a requisitioning officer anymore, right? From Lexington?
Those were prior to, and I don't have any official words.
I see. It's all rumored right now.
Facebook's free.
Must be true, it's on the internet.
That's what my grandmother said to me every day. I'm done. All move we approve.
Second.
Consent agenda.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, the motion carries. Any citizen is earned to be heard. Hearing none, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners? Mike?
Thank the Lord for a week of sunshine, and, uh, just basically, everybody be safe. God almighty.
I, I think back in, it was either the last, um, last meeting in February or around the first part of March, we discussed having, uh, the emergency manager give us an update, monthly update, on female reimbursement, state reimbursement for our roads and bridge, uh, issues. Just kind of wanted to maybe see if we could get him on the agenda for the fifteenth to do that for us. And then, uh, also wanted to, although we, we probably haven't got the, uh, the stuff back from the insurance company yet, uh, the sheriff's environmental vehicle replacement, we talked about that at our last meeting, uh, to pay for that out of the, the remaining balance or the remaining cost of the general fund, uh, to, to get a new vehicle for the environmental deputy. I know we probably haven't gotten, uh, the full reimbursement yet from, from ACC, uh, was there any?
I, I don't have an update right now, we're, I'm still putting it all together.
Okay, all righty, is that something we, we think we can at least discuss? What the, what the net cost will, will be approximate, uh, by, by the fifteenth?
So the last I heard is the approximate replacement is going to be about twenty-eight thousand, and the insurance is going to give about twenty-one, I don't have that firm yet.
Right. Right, that's all I got, sir.
All righty, I got a... So I read an article that, uh, Logan County supported this PBR at the Lazy E. Did any commissioners come out on Facebook or anything, I mean, I don't get Facebooks or have it, whatever, but are we supporting the PBR at the Lazy E, anybody?
No, Monty, I saw the same thing too, and I've, I've not discussed it with anybody, nor have I been approached. I think, uh, the, the only one that, that, and Troy, not to throw you under the bus, but I think you had mentioned something to me about it.
I emailed.
Yeah?
So...
Or, or, yeah, that's where I, I saw it, but that was, that was all I, I had seen, I haven't talked to anybody or, or said, yeah, I think it's a good idea, or whatever, but no, the county, the county, as far as I know, we haven't talked about it in an open meeting, which is the only place we could approve it.
Right.
So, not, not me.
Well, I know they, they called wanting a letter and, uh, saying that we don't have no planning and zoning areas, and we did provide on that letter, but that's not supporting the PBR having the bull riding at the Lazy E, I just wanted to make that clear that I did not support it, and I didn't figure anybody else did as well, so...
I did attend the meeting at, uh, the, uh, City Council wherein they, the, the people of the Lazy E were there, sheriff, you were there, and I felt like that they had met all the requirements, had exceeded them for the CDC for doing such an event. On the other side of the coin, the, the, uh, issue was brought up that there was going to be a lot of people coming from out of state on that, they go through different states that do hand the bars, it felt, at that time, I believe, Sheriff, correct me if I'm incorrect, uh, but it was felt at that time that it needed to be scrubbed, and therefore it was. So, you know, am I in support of it? Well, I'm in support of any business that figures that they can do business, certainly without the, with the state not being shut down, if they can bring it into, uh, the guidelines of the CDC, it makes certain that all are being handled safely and, and in the kind of manner it needs to be. But like I said, uh, there was enough concern, and certainly before that weekend even came up, uh, the governor closed the state, and so therefore it's a moot question regardless. But yes, sir, I, I did tell them that, didn't I? So, um, in any case, that's, that's what I said.
Yeah.
But I agree with you, it needed to come before the board, possibly.
Well, I, I just wanted to make it clear that the Board of County Commissioners did not support the PBR coming to the Lazy and hoping to pull them apart.
I'll second that.
I, I would just add to that that I was never asked whether or not I supported it or not, so, I, I mean, so, and at this point, you know, I'm not... And, and the other, the other point I, I would like to make, or just ask, is, uh, the Lazy E within the city limits of Gethry?
No.
Okay, so, their, 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 their ability to determine whether or not anything goes on out there is a moot point, anybody? All they were, all they were talking about was, um, people possibly using the hotels, motels, and, and, and places of business within the city limits of Gethry, if I'm, if I remember this discussion.
That's mostly correct, they bought a hotel, basically, all the rooms in it, and that's where they were going to...
Okay, in the city limits of Gethry.
That is correct.
So it is correct, not just basically.
Well, it, it, I say...
So my point, my point is, is the Lazy, uh, Lazy E doesn't fall within the city limits of Gethry, so the, the city of Gethry has no ability to restrict any activities at the Lazy E.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So my, my next question, would the county have the authority to even stop the Lazy from doing anything that the Lazy wanted to do, I can't find that we do, but...
I don't believe so, I think we're a subordinate, um, element of the state, and I think our, our responsibility is to enforce the laws of the state, and, and that's it. If the, if the state, if there's a law that the state uses, and that would be up to the governor to decide, right? Then, then if the governor made some sort of a legal announcement that somehow restricted commerce in, in a county, uh, then it, it could be up to the county to enforce it, and I say could be up to, it all depends on, on, on what it is. He has yet to come out and say, this is what we're, I, I require. Uh, it, my understanding is the governor has made recommendations, just like the CDC's made recommendations. Those are not laws, those are not federal law, that, that's not a requirement, that's a recommendation. And at this time, I think that's where we're at, but that's, that's just my humble opinion, sir.
Well, at that, your time, I agree with you, Monty, we did not have any jurisdiction as to what they wanted to do or not do, uh, it's private business, it was in District Two on my end, and therefore that's why I was called into it, uh, but, uh, because those are my constituents. But yes, sir, I agree with you totally, we do not have the power or ability to shut anybody down, uh, we just implore that they follow the CDC guidelines or exceed them, and I believe that's what they were trying to do, but I really am glad they're not having it. Let's put it that way, I think it should have been shut down, if possible, but they did that really themselves at the time, so, anyway.
All righty.
And it was not popular.
Marvin, you got anything else?
I'm done.
Anything, Mike?
I don't, I'm not sure, it's, we, uh, trying to think, I don't know.
All righty, sixteen, consideration of possible action on adjournments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.